Patterson, Pham, Przyzanski, Reynolds, Robinson, Brock Smith, Solman, Starr, Taylor, Thatcher, Weber. President Wagner.
Quorum is present. We will honor the colors. Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Senator James Ivory Manier.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with all its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our words this morning from Denise Levertov breathe the sweetness that hovers in August. The clerk will please read the proclamation from the governor.
Proclamation, whereas the Oregon Department of Transportation is facing a budget shortfall totaling hundreds of millions of dollars following conclusion of the 2025 legislative session by the 83rd Oregon Legislative Assembly, and whereas the budget shortfall has resulted in the announced plan by the Oregon Department of Transportation to reduce its workforce, meaning the impending loss of jobs, of state jobs that provide critical services and Oregonians rely on, and whereas the impending workforce reductions would result in the immediate loss of transportation services, duties, and responsibilities across the state of Oregon, and whereas the lack of adequate funding negatively impacts counties, cities, and public transit districts across the state that rely on revenue collected by the state of Oregon, and whereas without legislative action and necessary appropriation, the Oregon Department of Transportation and local Oregon governments cannot provide critical needs and services to the citizens of the state of Oregon. Now therefore, I, Tina Kotek, Governor of Oregon pursuant to Article Five, Section Twelve of the Oregon Constitution, find an extraordinary occasion exists, and do by this proclamation call the 83rd Oregon Legislative Assembly to convene in special session on Friday, August 29th, 2025, to pass legislation to fund transportation needs in Oregon. I request that the members of the Assembly act expeditiously in enacting legislation limited to and only regarding the matter referenced above and witness whereof I inherit and to set my hand and cause the great seal of the state of Oregon to be affixed done in the city of Hillsborough in the state of Oregon on this day, July 28th, 2025. Governor Tina Kotek.
Reports from special committees. The Credentials Committee report of May 12th, 2025 still stands that all members of the Senate are eligible to serve in the special session for the 83rd Legislative Assembly. Continuing under the orders of business, recognize Senator Jama.
Good morning, Mr. President. I move that the Senate, that the special session Senate rules which have been distributed to be adopted as Senate rules for the special session of the 83rd Legislative Assembly.
Senator Jama moves that the special session Senate rules which have been distributed be adopted as the Senate rules for the special session of the 83rd Legislative Assembly. Senator Jama, to your motion.
These rules will allow us to operate efficiently during the special session.
Thank you, Senator. On discussion. Recognize Senator Gerard.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, rarely do I challenge the rules, but in this case, I'm really not happy with the rules. And here's the problem that we're having. We're doing joint committees, and then because it's a joint committee, we're bypassing Ways and Means. This is billions of dollars that we're talking about. And I hate to tell you this, but we got some major financial problems. This isn't a standalone problem, and this bill really needs to go to Ways and Means. And for that reason, I'll be a no vote.
Thank you, Senator. Continuing under discussion. Recognize Senator Bonham.
Yeah, in the same vein, I've got concerns. The Senate rules historically have been something I've consistently objected to, not solely because of some of the nuances of the mechanics, but because it really does put so much power and control into the authority of the majority party. The Ways and Means concern, though, is of particular interest right now. We just had a revenue forecast that suggested that we're short about $800 million on what we thought we were going to have for the general fund. If we're really going to do the work prioritizing the people's money on how we deliver state resources for the services that they expect, core government services, transportation is absolutely one of them. We were talking this morning, I appreciated in caucus, one of our members said, if you prioritize state budgets, and I'm talking to constituents back home, I can tell them it's public safety, it's transportation, it's education, and I don't get any pushback from the people. Constituents that are paying taxes expect core government functions. Those are reasonable things to expect of the state of Oregon. Now, I will argue with you today as we debate transportation and how we're spending money that what we've done in the state of Oregon would be tantamount to a family buying a $2 million home and then turning it around and saying, man, I don't have enough money to furnish my house. I spent all the money buying the home, but now I don't have any furniture, I'm poor, and oh my gosh, how am I going to get the revenue or the income to pay for the furniture I need? They went out and they bought a $200,000 sports car, and then they said, well, I don't have any money for food. That's what the state of Oregon has done. And so to look at this budget that we're about to consider in a transportation package as if it's a silo and it has no implication across the entire broader spectrum of the budget conversation is a mistake. So to come into this special session, give a joint committee the opportunity to debate this one special, single line item budget, I feel is irresponsible. In my opinion, this is a broad conversation that should have our transportation people in a committee considering how we're going to approach the transportation conversation. But then, Senator Gerard, our budget expert, Senator Gerard's been doing this budget work for longer than I've been in the legislature. I need his expertise. I want him to have a separate consideration on the broader implication to the budget. So Senator Starr in our caucus may be our transportation expert policy-wise, but he doesn't understand necessarily the broader conversation, right? I'm going to sit in on that committee. I will understand transportation to the extent that I've been able to study it, but I serve on Ways and Means too. And I've got another opinion on what we should do with the rest of the budget to accommodate the transportation budget, and I can't have both of those conversations today, I'm only going to get one shot at it. And the people in our caucus that are our budget experts won't get to weigh in. I think that's a mistake, and I think these rules that are going to allow for a single point of conversation to facilitate a transportation budget and then move it forward to a vote is lackluster at best. And again, so myopic that it lacks global understanding of the entire process and recognition of that process. So I'm going to vote no on the rules this morning. I do think this approach that we're about to take is, again, short-sighted. There is a broader conversation that's coming, and to not address that today is only putting us in further harm the next time we come, whether it be another special session soon or the short session in '26. We are going to talk about the budget globally, and it's going to be a hard conversation. I'm not looking forward to that conversation. We're going to have to really consider what services are core to the state government, what we have to deliver, and where we're going to have to make some really hard choices. So again, I'm going to vote no on these rules. I would suggest that we all vote no, and we start to form a committee to discuss how we approach moving forward this special session.
Thank you, Senator. Additional discussion. So you know one in the queue for discussion. The question is on the adoption of the special session rules. All those in favor, please answer aye, as your names are called. All those opposed, no. The clerk will please call the roll.
Anderson. Bonham. Brodmann. Campos. Frederick. Gelsberlouin. Gerard. Golden. Gorsick. Hayden. Jama. Lieber. Lanthicum. Manning. McLean. Meek. Nash. Neron Misslin. Patterson. Pham. Przyzanski. Reynolds. Robinson. Brock Smith. Solman. Starr. Taylor. Thatcher. Weber. President Wagner.
Aye. Senator Jama. Senator Jama votes no. Having failed to receive a constitutional majority, the motion is failed. Under the queue, recognize Senator Jama.
I'd like to file motion to reconsider the motion.
Duly noted for the record, Senator. Continuing under the orders of business, the Secretary of Senate is directed to notify the Governor and the House Representatives that the Senate has completed its organization, is ready for the business of the special session, the 83rd Legislative Assembly. Effective immediately in pursuant to Senate Rule 8.05, I'm making the following committee appointments to the 2025 special session. Joint Special Session Committee on Transportation Funding. Senator Rob Wagner, co-chair. Senator Daniel Bonham, co-vice chair. Senator Conham. Senator Bruce Starr. Senator Winslow Campos. Continuing under the order of business, grievances of the Senate. Ramon Surtens. Recognize Senator Robinson.
Politicians have a bad reputation and are often viewed with suspicion. This is not helped by political consultants who give advice on the best way to message every action. We owe Oregonians precise explanations rather than politically designed messages. A recent example of this is the governor's veto of SB 976, which would have allowed non-veterinarians to perform pregnancy checks on cattle. There are many professionals that can easily do these, and we have a veterinarian shortage, which is a direct result of bureaucratic rules that absorb a large fraction of veterinarians' time and unnecessary paperwork. Our governor claimed, like none of vice of political consultants or lobbyists, that veterinarians are needed to look for contagious diseases at the same time. She also wants a special license, a silly requirement, and a professional's reputation will be immediately affected by his results. Veterinarians doing cattle pregnancy checks don't do full examinations because it isn't practical. My brother did these after graduating from veterinary school in the Midwest in large batches for $3 each. He described it as trivial to do. Some contagious diseases are serious issues, but veterinarians are called in when there is a reason for concern. Effective disease detection does not rely on noticing something during pregnancy checks. So why was SB 976 vetoed? Speculations include retaliation over other issues and the usual story of professional organizations protecting their turfs so they can keep prices high. Lobbyists may have given the governor excuses instead of the truth. We should not have to wonder. Let's stop messaging decisions and simply give Oregonians the full details. The subject of this special session is a perfect time to do this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator. Continuing under Ramon Surtens, recognize Senator Nash.
Thank you, Mr. President. This may be my one opportunity to speak to the vetoed bill, 976. I was thrilled to be placed on the Natural Resource Committee here within the Senate and to be able to represent those things from where I come. Cattle is something near and dear to my heart. I've had ownership of cattle since I was five years old in some capacity and very familiar with cattle. I represented Oregon Cattlemen's Association eventually as their president and proud to continue to do that work here and bring some of those difficulties that the industry has. Likely this next year, we will see that cattle and calves in Oregon is the number one ag commodity here. Reproduction in cattle is the number one economic driver and making sure that our cattle are well-kept, reproduction continues, and those that are experts in the field of being able to identify cattle when they're bred, that's a priority to me, making sure that we catch diseases. The bill would have required those that aren't reporting right now to report. The two things that the governor identified in her letter were the new world's worm and avian flu. Neither of which have to do with reproduction. It's that far out of step and out of her wheelhouse, and it's shameful that she did this to an industry that she doesn't understand and doesn't represent. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator. Continuing under Ramon Surtens, recognize Senator Bonham.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we're here at a special session, we just finished a long session. We had five and a half months to consider a transportation package. We're back here now, and the thing that I found fascinating during the five and a half month long session was the process that led to a transportation vote. We had a statewide tour where we went around the state. We went to 10 different locations, and we told people, we think we need new money for transportation. We didn't tell them what that meant, we didn't quantify it in terms of how it was going to impact them, but we said, we need $3 billion of new money to fill this maintenance and operations gap that we have. The maintenance and operations gap, to be clear, was actually quantified as $350 million. The number that we put forward that we were telling people in the statewide tour was 3 billion. How you get from 350 million to 3 billion, I guess the cost of bureaucracy. But we didn't quantify it in terms of what it was going to cost per gallon. We didn't quantify it in terms of what a road use charge looked like. We didn't tell you what your new licensing, what your new registration fees were going to be. But coming off of the November election, what I heard from people around the state was, we can't afford to live here. I don't know where my grandkids are going to live. The cost of housing is through the roof. Affordability is a major problem here in Oregon. And we came into this legislative session saying, we need a new tax for transportation. We didn't consider that in our global all-in budget of $140 billion for biennium that we could prioritize transportation to the extent that we wouldn't need a new tax for it. It would have meant hard choices, yes, but we couldn't prioritize core function, and the people of Oregon have not changed their mind. They cannot afford a new tax.
Thank you, Senator. Continuing under Ramon Surtens, recognize Senator Starr.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to address an issue that is not the hot topic of this emergency session of the legislature, but instead, the revenue forecast that we saw on Wednesday. There's a lot of ringing of hands, particularly a number of members of the majority party that says, oh my goodness, we're down 800 and some odd million dollars. But if you look at the reality of that, that 800 and some odd million dollars, the majority of that is left in the pockets of Oregonians, Oregon taxpayers. Oregon taxpayers who, I would suggest, are not undertaxed in this state. It's a lot of ringing of hands, a lot of, oh my goodness, the sky is falling because all of a sudden we seem to have less revenue available for state government to spend. Colleagues, my friends, this Wednesday's revenue forecast is just a drop in the bucket. If you look at the storm clouds that are on the horizon in our state, the loss of significant high-paying jobs in the metro area, those impacts have not shown themselves yet as it relates to forecasts. And I would suggest that unless we get serious, this body gets serious about changing the direction of our state, creating an environment where entrepreneurs and those with dollars to invest want to come here to invest, where we don't have the flight of capital, where we don't have the flight of intellectual capital in the form of individuals, this forecast is going to be easy-peasy compared to what we have in the future. Let's get to work, we've got some time to do it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator. Continuing under Ramon Surtens, recognize Senator Roxman.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I rise to talk about why we're here today and its impact on Oregonians, especially those in our rural communities. Mr. President, colleagues, we're in a situation where there was good bipartisan work and efforts by my colleagues and others during the legislative session, but yet here we all are here today because Governor Kotek has called this special session so that we can raise gas taxes, we can raise registration and title fees, and double the payroll tax of working Oregonians across the state. But I want to talk to you about how that's going to negatively impact my rural residents and their communities greater than those of my urban counterparts. The Pere Grone in Hood River is less expensive at the Fred Meyer in Hood River than it is at the Fred Meyer in Brookings, as is every other good that is transported to Brookings. My residents that live in Port Orford live at the poverty level at a median income roughly, and yet they have to drive an hour in either direction to get to a Fred Meyer for less expensive groceries, and they have to drive that distance or longer for other services that are necessary for them. But many of them are not driving vehicles that are efficient and newer because they can't afford them. And they're paying for gas that, of course, is more expensive because it's being trucked all the way down to them. And so, colleagues, I want you to remember that we have another alternative to utilize existing money so that we can have a true transportation package in '26.
Thank you, Senator. Continuing under the orders of business, messages from the governor.
Mr. President, I am driven by the governor to inform you that she has vetoed the following bills, Senate Bill 976 and Senate Bill 1047.
Reports from committees. Propositions and motions, recognize Senator Jama.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the vetoing Senate Bill 976 and Senate Bill 1047 together with the governor's message be laid on the table.
Senator Jama moves that veto Senate Bill 976 and Senate Bill 1047 together with the governor's messages be laid on the table. Non-debatable motion. All those in favors, please signify by saying aye as their names are called. All those opposed, no. The clerk will please call the roll.
Bonham. Brodmann. Campos. Frederick. Gelsberlouin. Gerard. Golden. Gorsick. Hayden. Jama. Lieber. Lanthicum. Manning. McLean. Meek. Nash. Neron Misslin. Patterson. Pham. Przyzanski. Reynolds. Robinson. Brock Smith. Solman. Starr. Taylor. Thatcher. Weber. Anderson. President Wagner.
Aye. Having received the constitutional requirement of majority of members present, the motion is carried. Action on executive appointments requiring Senate confirmation, introduction of first reading of Senate measures, second reading of Senate measures, third reading of Senate measures, first reading of House measures, second reading of House measures, third reading of House measures, other risks of the Senate. Pursuant to Rule 8.16, I declare that signed aye of the 2025 special session is imminent, and I hereby invoke the following provisions as follows. Notwithstanding the provision, SR 8.15, the committee chair may call a meeting of the committee with less than the notice required under SR 8.15 Sub 1 Sub A or Sub B, if at least one hour prior to the meeting notice is given to the secretary of the Senate's office and posted outside the Senate chamber, if possible electronically through the Oregon Legislative Information System and in any other place reasonably designed to give notice to the public and interested persons. Whenever possible, such meetings shall be announced on the floor while the Senate is in session. Notwithstanding the provision of SR 8.20, a committee or joint committee may take action on a measure or amendment with less than the notice required under SR 8.20 Sub 3, only after the full text of the measure or amendment has been made publicly available online for at least one hour. Colleagues, the Senate will stand at ease. The Senate will please come to order. Recognize Senator Jama.
Thank you, Mr. President. Having served notice of reconsideration, I move that the vote thereby the Senate fail to adopt the special Senate rules of the 83rd Legislative Assembly to be reconsidered.
Senator Jama has served notice of reconsiderations. Move that the vote whereby the Senate fail to adopt the special session rules of the 83rd Legislative Assembly be reconsidered. Senator Jama, to your motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. This will allow better consideration of the rules.
Thank you, Senator. Discussion on the measure. So you know one in the queue for discussion, Senator Jama, do you wish to close? He does not. The question is now before the reconsideration of the vote on the adoption of the special session rules of the 83rd Legislative Assembly to the majority of members present. All in favor of the motion will say aye as their names are called. All those opposed, no. The clerk will please call the roll.
Brodmann. Campos. Frederick. Gelsberlouin. Gerard. Golden. Gorsick. Hayden. Jama. Lieber. Lanthicum. Manning. McLean. Meek. Nash. Neron Misslin. Patterson. Pham. Przyzanski. Reynolds. Robinson. Brock Smith. Solman. Starr. Taylor. Thatcher. Weber. President Wagner. Anderson. Bonham. President Wagner. Excused, Gelsberlouin. Gorsick. Hayden. Bieber. Lanthicum. McLean. Przyzanski. Thatcher. Voting Day. Anderson. Brodmann. Nash. Robinson. Brock Smith. Starr. Weber. Fourteenas.
Having received the constitutional requirement of majority of the members present, the motion is carried. Continuing, recognize Senator Jama.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the vote on the adoption of the special Senate rules to be postponed to the Monday, September 1st calendar.
Senator Jama moves that the vote on the adoption of the special session rules be postponed to Monday, September 1st calendar. Senator Jama, to your motion.
This would be a better way to consider this clause.
Thank you, Senator. Discussion on the measure. So you know one in the queue for discussion? Senator Jama, do you wish to close? He does not. The question is on postponing the adoption of the special session rules to the Monday, September 1st calendar. Those in favor, please answer aye as their names are called. All those opposed, no. The clerk will please call the roll.
Campos. Frederick. Gelsberlouin. Gerard. Golden. Gorsick. Hayden. Jama. Lieber. Lanthicum. Manning. McLean. Meek. Nash. Neron Misslin. Patterson. Pham. Przyzanski. Reynolds. Robinson. Brock Smith. Solman. Starr. Taylor. Thatcher. Weber. Anderson. Bonham. Brodmann. President Wagner. Excused, Gelsberlouin. Gorsick. Hayden. Lieber. Lanthicum. McLean. Przyzanski. Thatcher. Voting Day. Anderson. Brodmann. Gerard. Nash. Robinson. Brock Smith. Starr. Weber. Fourteenas.
Having received the constitutional requirement of the majority of the members present, the motion is carried. I had already read other business of the Senate. Continuing under the order of business under announcements.
No.
Bonham.
No.
President Wagner.
Aye.